Does all this mean to order if you please rise with pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, councilmembers Burgoyne, Girbaugh, Cybo Koenig, Rhodes, Roth, and Mayor Protem Tahar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, city superintendent engineer Ruble. Is he here this evening? Yeah, okay, I see him in the back. City Treasurer Bennett, NDPW Director Fordyce. For the rest of you in the audience this evening, if you'd please sign up or sign in, excuse me, in the back, we would appreciate that. I have some corrections to the upcoming meetings at the end of our agenda this evening, but I can discuss those when we get to it. It's not really a pertinent part of the agenda. So at this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Move as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We have no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that action item. And we have four presentations on the agenda this evening. The first of which is a presentation to the Celine Twirlets. So where's Susan, is she here? Why don't you come forward? And if actually any of the young ladies would like to come forward, we would welcome them at this time. We've got a big group tonight. Appreciate you being with us. Well, this is a very auspicious occasion, and I'm very honored. And I think I speak for all of my colleagues on city council when I say that we are very pleased that you could join us here this evening. You know, my friends, I speak a lot about the things that make Celine a special and unique and different place. And one of the reasons why this is an exceptional community is because of groups like the Celine Twirlets and because of people like Susan Usher, who go the extra mile and give quite a bit of themselves to benefit not only our young people, but ultimately the community. So I'm very proud that my office, in conjunction with the city clerk's office, prepared a letter of commendation to you all. I'm not going to read it in its entirety, but I want to say this, that you all make us very proud, and you bring a lot of regional, statewide, and national recognition to Celine, and we are very much indebted to you. And you should be proud of all of your accomplishments. And I think that that sentiment is shared by all your family, your friends, and well-wishers who are here this evening to congratulate you. So why don't we give these fine young ladies a round of applause? I'm going to present this to your coach. Congratulations. Keep up the good work. Again, you make us very proud. And I guess I'll turn it over to you now if you'd like to share a few words.
Well, thank you very much. This is, we've had a couple occasions where we've come here and we're very proud to say that we're national champions. And this summer, we earned our 14th and 15th national championship, so it was very special. So two different teams. The first one was our Muppets team, so if you want to raise your hand. So they portrayed the Muppets and the Muppet characters. They can share their characters with you later. And then also, we had our older team, which is our junior team. One is sick and two are at college, so it's nice that we can say that we have our, the girl that was on the team is, she's a Yale feature twirler, Chrissy Hul. And the other one attends Michigan Tech. So it's nice, we're always proud that our college twirlers want to come back and want to stay with us through the summer. So we're very proud that we had two national championships to make our total 15. And actually, these young ladies are not only from Celine, I should mention, but they are from Grass Lake. So raise your hand if you're from Grass Lake. One lives in Jackson, and one lives in Chelsea. So we're very proud. Go ahead. We're very proud that now we attract, you know, girls from all over the area that want to come and twirl with the Celine Twirlets and are very committed and make that drive and make that commitment and have kept the group going and kept me going. So, thank you very much.
One more thing, because I can't resist. So you did the Muppets? I love the Muppets. Was anybody animal? That's my favorite. You were animal? He has a lot of energy, doesn't he? Yeah, he's my favorite. Good choice, you're a smart young lady. Okay. Why don't we give this group one more round of applause? Thank you very much. Now, you're welcome to state for the audit for your thinking. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Congratulations.
I'm going to ask our Parks and Rec Director and the Chairwoman of our Parks Commission to come forward now and present the Green Thumb Awards. Thank you for being here. My pleasure.
I'm so excited to be here. Good job, Twirlets. It's a great way to tee us up. So, my name is Elena Hess. I am the Chair of the Parks Commission, I'm very proud to say that. And we're here today because of the Green Thumb Award, which we've been doing annually for many years. So the Parks Commission organizes this annual program. It's a special recognition and thanks to all of our residents and businesses who participate, and a special thank you to Sheila Burgoyne and John Phillips, who really put a lot of effort into making this year's a successful one. So, we held the program June and July of this year. There were 25 properties nominated, four in the business or the public garden category, and 21 in the residential category. So we're going to jump right in and start recognizing our winners. First, for the business or public garden winner. That is the Celine Senior Center at 7190 North Maple Road. Arina Shamen from the Senior Center, thank you Brian, from the Senior Center, and Catherine Reyes from the Celine Stone and Thistle Garden Club are here tonight. Catherine and the Stone and Thistle Club have done an excellent job creating an inviting and colorful entrance into the center. So thank you so very much, we really appreciate it.
Ladies, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We have three residential winners. Maria DeVries, are you here with us today?
Yes.
Maria, yay, Maria, come on up! All right. 465 Lexington. This yard is a labor of love. It's so full of interesting shrubs, it could qualify as a nursery. Both the front and backyard are designed with beautiful shrubs and perennials. Thank you so much, Maria. We really appreciate all the effort you put into it. Come on up, don't be shy.
Beautiful yard.
Yeah.
Big barstow.
Many years ago.
We have some Celineans for a long time, huh?
Great.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Big smile, everyone.
Okay. Congratulations.
Second residential winner is Mike and Rebecca Godak of 696 Bannock. Were nominated for their corner lot in Torwood subdivision. A mossy stepping stone area leads to the sidewalk, and the backyard has a shade garden, a rock garden, and a fairy garden, which I know my daughter really appreciates. So, is Mike and Rebecca here? Great, Mike here? Great. I have to tell you all, pardon me?
I was nominated to do this, my wife does all the work.
Okay, yeah, so this is a surprise? No.
Congratulations. Nope, one more. Great, thank you.
And last and certainly not least, Nancy Rogers of 310 North Harris. Nancy is a former Parks Commissioner, and I promise there was no shenanigans going on there. She has worked so hard to spruce up this adorable corner lot with a patriotic essence, especially when the peonies are in full bloom. And it's always nice to see you Nancy outside of math classes.
It is a beautiful yard. Let's give one more round of applause to Director Scruggs and the Parks Commission for their work on this project. Thank you. Now, on this next one, we're getting the cart before the horse, but you know, I'm a vote counter, and I have a sneaking suspicion that this is going to pass unanimously under the consent agenda. So we are recognizing the National Friends of the Library Week, which is October the 19th through 25th. So I know we have our library director here, and I know we have many people affiliated with the bookshop. You want to come forward? Quite a few, wonderful. Oh wow. Great turnout. Exceeds expectations. You told me maybe two or three. Well, let me first say this, and this goes without saying. We are very blessed to have the Celine Library in our community. It is the envy of many cities and towns throughout southeast Michigan. And that's a reflection of our library director and her very competent staffs. So let's give her a round of applause to start with. But it's also special because it has a great bookshop that's open, is it every day now? Every day? Every day the library is open. A great bookshop, I've patronized it on many occasions. I'm a book buyer, not a renter, so I don't go into the library, I just go into the shop, yeah. You do a great job too, but I want to underline and fold pages. Yeah. But the bookshop is very special, it is a great community resource. It's a great way for people who have read a book and enjoyed it to lend it to an entity who then can derive some money from it and bring some joy and satisfaction to another person's life. So I'm not going to read this resolution in its entirety. There'll be a copy posted on the bulletin board out front. This is a copy for you all to enjoy. But the other thing that I need to say is that the library bookshop would not be a success without all of these committed volunteers, and I think there's a number who are absent this evening. So why don't we give all of them a round of applause? Could have added that this resolution was not my brainchild, but the brainchild of my Mayor Protem, who interestingly enough is a volunteer at the library bookshop and is a former librarian herself. Would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to say, I, many, some of you may know, I chair the committee that operates the bookshop. And working, I've been a member of the Friends since I, practically since I moved to Celine, within moments after I moved to Celine in 1995. And, but on behalf of the other members of the bookshop committee, I have to say that working with this group of volunteers is just such a joy. It's an amazing group of people. Everyone in the group contributes in tangible, wonderful ways, so it's a real joy to do this. And I'd also like to just allow Lynda Duval, who is the Chair of the Friends Board, to say a few words.
I would just like to thank the community, because if you didn't donate books, we would have nothing to sell. And thank you for buying the books, because then we can pass the money on to the library. I'd also like to thank the library. Without their support in terms of space and all the other things that they do for us, we could not operate. And lastly, but not least, I would like to thank the volunteers, who not only do the bookstore, but do parades and gardens and summer reading kickoffs and all kinds of other things that help both the library and the community. So, thank you.
One of the things that you might not be aware of is, the Friends of the Library actually began in 1968, so when most of us were still children. And they have had book sales since their founding in the mid-sixties. In 1995, when we moved over into the building on North Maple, Edna and Earl Lawfree, who, Earl used to be on council here, they came up with the idea of doing a monthly book sale. And you may remember those old signs, every Wednesday before the last Saturday of every month, those green and white signs went out, and we would open up that little friends room and the brecken room, and even moved into the lobby, and once a month, we had these book sales. Those sales, along with some money in their bank account, allowed the Friends of the Library to give to the library $125,000 in 2006 to help fund our expansion project. So all of those items that cost 25 cents, 50 cents, $1, some $5, you know, all adds up. And it's so, so we spent that $125,000, and I'm really pleased to say that since we came back into the building in 2008, we provided space so that they could have a larger bookstore. We named it the Corner Bookshop, which I think most of you know about in town. And now their bank account is pretty hefty again, again from those 50 cents, those dollars. So I want to thank all of them. The Friends, there's about 80 people who work that bookshop. So this is just a small but mighty group that are here tonight. So please, as Lynda said, please keep donating your books, come to the store often, read your books, bring them back, so we can sell them a second time, you know? And we can keep moving forward and doing projects for the library. And thank you all very much.
Thank you, Leslie. So I think I'm going to present this to Lynda as the Chair. So again, why don't we give these women and gentlemen a big round of applause? And do we want to get some pictures here? Thank you. Thank you very much, we appreciate it, all that you do. Okay, we're now going to proceed with the audit presentation from Plant Moran. I believe Martin and Nick are present. Gentlemen, if you want to come forward. Chase, if you want to lower the screen. Shaw will have a packet in front of you, colleagues. And the way this is going to work is, Nick and Martin are going to do their presentation, we'll open it up to questions. And of course, then later on on the agenda, item 14-212 will be the approval of the audit, and at that time, if we want to engage in dialogue and discussion, the Chair will welcome that. So gentlemen, whenever you're ready. Chase, can we make sure this TV's on for the gentleman over here? There it goes. Okay. Sorry about that.
Good evening. Just a quick introduction, and we'll get into the presentation.
Martin, excuse me, why don't we pull that mic up a little bit?
Pull it up?
Yeah. It's not catching your voice there.
I grow a little bit too much. My name is Martin Alainic, I'm the partner on the audit, and with me is Nick Gurekha, who is the manager. We're going to present to you the statements for the city of Celine, June 30, 2014, year end. Instead of going through page by page of the financial statements, we're going to go through the graphics presentation, just like we have in the past. I did want to summarize real quick on the financial statements, that the first page, which is the audit opinion letter, it is a clean opinion, which means that you can rely on the statements. It's essentially like receiving a grade A on your report card. So you can rely on the statements, you can use them for budget purposes, et cetera. It is materially correct, and we've tested all the balances, et cetera. So that's the, I guess, most important document that you would expect every year. All the other information is the city's information that we tested in order to make sure that it is relevant and accurate. So like I said, with that said, Nick's going to present the graphs, and following, I will go over the management letter with any suggestions or any findings that we found during the audit.
So I see that's the quickest way to get half the people out, is telling the audits up next. All right. Well, again, my name's Nick Gurekha, and I'm going to be touching on the graphs, which are just the financial highlights of the financial statements themselves. So let's just get right into it. If it works. Yeah. All right. So, starting off with Slide 1, this is the general fund revenue. For financial statement purposes and for the purposes of this graph, anytime I mention general fund, note that it's going to include the fire department special assessment as well. Due to the new GASB rules that were implemented a couple years ago, the Fire Department Special Assessment Fund was rolled into the general fund. So anytime we talk about general fund, we're talking about those two combined. So as we're looking at this first slide, the thing I'm going to point out is just the fact that property taxes makes up the significant portion of the general fund revenues. When you combine the residential and the non-residential, it makes up about 70% of the general fund revenues in total. And again, if you have any questions, just feel free to stop me and ask as I'm going along. So moving on to Slide 2, we see the general fund revenue compared to the past several years. So compared to last year, property taxes increased about 7%. As we get into the later slides, we're going to see that property tax values increased for the first time in 2014 over the past several years. So we're starting to see some light at the end of the tunnel of the recession. State sources is primarily made up of the state shared revenue payments from the collections of the state tax. In total, the state sources decreased. State shared revenue, those collections of state tax that are remitted from the state actually increased. The decrease that you're seeing in that column is the one-time grant of about $100,000 that was recognized in 2013, so that's why you're seeing a decrease there. Charges for service is primarily the administrative reimbursements that the general fund charges to the other funds. So as the general fund is the operating account, it incurs a lot of the expenses, pays the expenses, and then it gets reimbursed by the other funds, the revenues recorded in that. And then the other income includes local grant money, cable fees, and other miscellaneous items. The decrease from last year is the donations and grants that were received in prior year for the non-motorized cart path that was capitalized. Moving on to Slide 3. So Slide 3 stays in the general fund, but it shifts focus to the expenses. The main piece of this overall pie is the general government expenses. This is where the majority of the salaries and wages, the professional fees, and the other general costs are recorded. That makes up 43%. But moving on to the next slide, as we showed the comparison of the revenues, Slide 4 shows the comparison of the expenses to the last several years. Comparing the current year expenses to the previous years, it really shows that the city is doing a great job of keeping their costs in line. In total, current year expenses were approximately $328,000 less than what they were last year. So again, it really shows that the city is doing a great job of keeping the costs from escalating. And then on to Slide 5, this shows the general fund fund balance. So as I mentioned in the first slide, the new GASB that was implemented changed the way the general fund was reported, it also changed the fund balance definitions. How we show this slide, however, is kind of what it would look like pre-GASB 54 implementation, just so we could show some more historical years and there would be a little more comparability. But as we look at the general fund fund balance, the fund balance did increase about $300,000 in the current year. This was due to several factors, which I touched on. You had the increase in the property tax values, and then you had the decrease in expenses that we saw, which all led to the increase in the fund balance itself. But the city's unassigned piece, which is the yellow piece here, currently is at 19.5% of the prior year's audited operating expenditures, which is right in line with your fund balance policy to keep it between 15 and 20. So moving on to Slide 6, we have the capital expenditures throughout the year. As required, the city had built up the water and sewer capital replacement reserve, and in the current year, the city used a lot of those funds for some much-needed capital improvements in the sewer fund with the water treatment plant. So that's why you're seeing the very large piece in the water and sewer improvement and repairs. Yes, Mr. Burgoyne?
Actually, our fund balance policy is that our unreserved will be between 15 and 20, and assignments, which we can do from week to week, are not the basis for that. So it's the unreserved component. And if you go back to Slide 5, I think the reserved portion you list at the bottom somewhere, which is, I think, $55,748. And that would be the part that we do not compare. We don't compare the things we can't touch.
Okay. My apologies. Okay. Moving on to Slide 7 then. So Slide 7 moves away from the general fund and looks at the city as a whole. So these next couple of slides are going to include the general fund and then also all the other governmental funds, as well as the GASB adjustments to go from the modified accrual basis to the full accrual basis that's in the front of the statements. Property tax revenue is still the main source of income for the city as a whole, and then there's also a large piece, charges for services, because now this includes the revenue from the Celine rec fund, which obviously was not included when we just showed the general fund. And moving on to Slide 8, we see the expenditures of the city as a whole. And again, this is just another slide that I think does a good job of showing that the city is doing a great job keeping their costs as low as possible, because in, as a city as a whole, total expenditures this year was about $130,000 less than expenditures last year. So again, great job at cutting costs. Slide 9, we see the property tax composition for the city. A key takeaway from this slide is that although the city does charge the residents and collects a lot of different mills, only a small portion of those mills actually stays with the city. So if we're looking at the pie to the right, of the 62 and 1/2 mills that the city assesses and collects, only the 14.7 of operating and the 1.5 of solid waste is what's actually kept by the city for city expenses. The rest are remitted to other agencies or authorities. And then moving on to Slide 10, this shows the millage history of the city. So as you can see from the graph, the city mills have stayed very consistent over the past several years. For the 2014 audit year, which is what we just audited, there was an increase of .75 mills, but going forward to the 2015, the year that you're in right now, they did stay consistent with the 2014 audit at 16.28. So on to Slide 11, this is the same information, but it also adds in the other surrounding communities' mills. This is another slide, as well as a previous slide, it really does go to show that the city is doing a great job of keeping the costs as low as possible to the residents. Because if you look at the bottom right of this, you see that there's excess levy capacity of about 1.4 mills. So what this means is that the city has a legal right, a legal ability to increase the mills, but you have intentionally not done so to not increase those costs to the residents. And as we all know, with the downturn of 2009 and going forward, an easy solution would have been, hey, let's increase our mills, let's take care of that extra millage capacity to bring some of that lost revenue back. The city, again, has made an effort to not do that and keep the costs as low as possible. So we want to commend the city for that as well. So on to Slide 12, we show the past several years of the state equalized values. As I mentioned, 2004 was the first increase we've seen in a while. 2015, there was a slight increase, and as we'll see with the next slide, there's never going to be a real significant jump, and I can kind of touch on that with Slide 13. So this slide shows the taxable value versus the state equalized value. While the taxable values were decreasing over the past several years, this gap had closed, but because the taxable values have started to rise again, the gap is going to widen more. Well, that's because there's a cap that the state equalized value can increase. It can only increase the lesser of taxable value or inflation. And as we all... What's that? Taxable value can only...
Taxable value can only increase.
Yeah. So, and it's capped, so obviously with inflation being as low as it is, it's never going to increase a significant amount from year to year. So as you can see, 2006 to 2011, you can drop over $100 million in state equalized value, but it's going to take a significantly much longer time to recoup that lost revenue. On to Page 14, or Slide 14. This shows the shortfall of the state shared revenue since the state made cuts in their calculation. So in 2000, the state made some changes to how they calculate the statutory or EVIP piece of the state shared revenue. All this slide is really doing is showing what that effect had and showing how much less even now the revenue was compared to 13 years ago before they made that change. So it's a pretty significant impact, the change of the calculation that the state had.
And one thing to point out, just to add on too, is, so in 2000, 2001, you're talking about those dollars valued at that point in time. So this does not take into account inflation. So if you think about what was going on with your expenses during that timeframe, expenses don't shrink. The expenses keep going up. So kind of going back with what Nick's been saying is, the city has really done a really good job on trying to keep the costs to a minimum, because unfortunately, your revenues were shrinking along with property taxes, and your expenses were not. So this only takes into account just assuming the dollar is worth the same as in the past. If we put in an inflationary factor in there, the gap would be that much wider.
And then the next two slides. So Slides 15 and 16 show the operations of the water and the sewer funds. For the current year, 2014, water rates were the same and sewer rates increased slightly. So as we look at operating revenues and operating expenditures, in the water fund, operating revenue decreased and operating expenses increased. So in total, there was about a $150,000 decrease in the operating income from what it was last year. And then looking at the sewer fund, although there was a slight increase in the operating revenues, operating expenses increased a little more. So again, there was a decrease in what that operating income was. And going forward for the 2015 year, actually, the water rates decreased and the sewer rates increased as an attempt to try to realign the revenues with the costs of those funds. On to Slide 17. This shows the actuarial assets and liabilities based on the most recent actuarial valuation, which was done as of December 31, 2013. Really, this is just some information that the city uses to determine how much to fund into the pension. So the three amounts on the left and then the amount on the bottom left represents the total accrued liability, which is the total costs that it would take to 100% fund your pension as of right now, or as of December 31, 2013. And the middle 16.5 amount represents the actual value of the assets you have into the plan as of December 31, 2013. And then the last slide is Slide 18. This is just a lot of the same information, but just presented a different way, just to help give some information regarding the revenues of the city by different activities. So I guess with that, if there are no other questions, I'll pass it off to Martin.
No questions for Nick? No? Okay. Martin? It's all you, my friend.
So as mentioned earlier, I'm just going to cover the management letter, which is about a 15-page document you have in front of you. It is broken up into different sections, and I wanted to just kind of go through the sections individually. So Section 1, which starts on Page 3, is report to the council and to the city about any internal control matters that we would have noted. We do have one item that we did find during the year. I do want to point out that even though it's in the internal control items, it's not technically an internal control. It just goes by definition, has to be included in the section. So anything that we found that maybe required a more significant adjustment to the books before the financial statements were published, we need to note it in here. However, since we don't make any comments about internal control issues noted, we can't say, come out and say there were no issues, because we're prevented by gap standards, auditing standards, to be able to do that. However, since you don't see that in the letter, that means we didn't find any internal control issues. The one item that we did note was actually discussed in the past over the last few years. It's not booking the unbilled water and sewer revenues as of June 30. So historically, the city would have done more of a cash basis. So as you're collecting, or as you're billing the water and sewer revenues, that's not going to be recorded versus when it's actually earned, per se. So as an example, if you don't bill until late July or August for water and sewer that was, or for water that was done before in, you know, May and June, technically, it wouldn't have been recorded until the following year. For gap purposes, you should be accruing as of June 30. So since, you know, inflationary adjustments, adjustments overall to the rates, usage changes, the number actually creeped up this year. It did increase to more of a significant dollar amount, and just based on the definition, we have to note it in here that the number was booked this year. And we did discuss with the city, and those calculations are going to be performed going forward to make sure that it's going to be a clean cutoff as of June 30. Now, on the other side, so this is revenue. On the other side, the city does record all the expenses as of June 30. It does accrue. We tested those, and we didn't see any issues or anything like that.
Martin, real quick, I've got a colleague who has a question. Mr. Burgoyne?
Sure.
In terms of the way that the city operates its billing cycles, is there any recommendation on changing the billing cycles or just properly accruing it?
Honestly, I would leave things as they are. It's just, I would do the calculation. It's a pretty quick calculation. And what happens is accrue it as of June 30, and then literally, July 1, you reverse that journal entry, so that way you kind of keep going with the way things were going, and then again, keep doing it. And then again, at June 30, you'll do the same thing again. So it's a relatively easy calculation. It's probably not very time-consuming. It's just something that you kind of true up the books as of June 30. So this year's statements technically do include essentially 13 months of revenue in water and sewer. It doesn't qualify as a prior period adjustment to kind of move things into last year, because it wasn't a material dollar amount. However, just to kind of true things up and going forward, it'll be 12 months' worth of activity. Section 2, it's require communication with the council, and this is essentially in response to the letter that you would have received before the audit started. Before the audit, we would have communicated with you what the process is for the audit, et cetera, and that we were going to issue another letter at the end. So this is the component of the letter that's in response to that. This comments if we've noted any issues during the audit, disagreements with management, any other major items that we would have had during the audit. Essentially, it's, the next few pages just comment overall on the process. However, there are no issues or disagreements that would have to be reported to the council, because we did not have any with the management. Section 3, which is on Page 7, are other recommendations, related information. So these items would be kind of just to button up things a little bit, or just kind of informational items that we would have noted during the testing. None of these items would have been deemed significant. That's why they're not in Section 1 of the letter, but just kind of general recommendations. Investment rate of return on pension assets, that's the first item. We did note that the rate of return right now is 8%. That is calculated in the reports. Now, that's the actuarial assumption, 8%. It could be deemed a little aggressive. However, I would just kind of caution to discuss that with the actuary going forward, especially with GASB 68, which is a new pronouncement that's going to be coming up for next year. And at that point in time, your pension liability actually has to be recorded for your full accrual statements. So that's going to be all done by the actuary. So in that process, I would just make sure to talk to them, make sure that the 8% is reasonable. And 8% may very well be fine. It's just a matter of making sure that it is okay. Merced application submissions. During our testing, it was noted that some of the submissions were not necessarily reviewed. We did do the testing. We didn't find any errors, but we didn't see a review process in place. So we just recommended that there was a review process put in place, and subsequent to year-end, this control has been put into place. It's just that this was during the year. And again, we didn't find any issues or any errors during the testing.
Martin, again, a colleague has a question.
For your information, we have been discussing with MERS, and that assumption of 8%. Since 1981, they've used 10-year smoothing. And right now, with the downturn in the economy in 2008, they are below the 8%, but they have never gone below 6.5%. And they're approaching the 8% again, because last year, they had 11.25% return. So the 8% does appear to be on target and does appear to be reasonable.
And it may very well be fine. And you know, another thing to note, since you mentioned MERS, is we've been working closely with them just for the GASB 68 implementation. It does seem that they're very well positioned for that. But again, I just always encourage the city just to keep track of it. But again, it seems like they're very well positioned for that. And then the last item, we noted miscalculation, some of the information wasn't updated in capture schedules for LDFAs and TIFA. However, again, subsequent to year-end, this item has been corrected. We did calculate the dollar amount. It was deemed insignificant, but again, just to kind of reinforce, making sure, review the schedules and making sure things are adjusted. But again, subsequent to year-end, it has been adjusted. The last section, Section 4, which is probably the biggest section in the letter, is just items related to just what's going on around the state, things to watch out for. I will highlight a few of these items. Feel free to, you know, ask any more detailed questions. So first, budgetary stress. I know that Nick mentioned already that the city has been really working hard on making sure you cut your expenses or maintain your expenses at a certain level to try and not go into a deficit or anything like that. I think the city's done a really good job on maintaining the fund balance and trying to improve the fund balance. I would caution you, however, I feel that we're not necessarily out of the woods yet. I know that the fund balance has been increasing a little bit for the last couple of years. And, you know, historically, it would have been, questions would have always arisen, you know, what's the fund balance that needs to be maintained by the city in order to be comfortable? In the past, we would have probably said 15 or 20%. Well, 2008, '09 came, and now we're saying, you know what? Maybe that 15, 20% isn't enough. So who knows what the right percentage is, but I would always caution the city to make sure, keep an eye on it, make sure you maintain a good fund balance in order to prevent any disasters, I guess, in the future, if there's another recession or anything like that.
Another question? Please. On, in terms of the changes in revenue and building fund balance, I know you mentioned earlier that the annual rate of increase of our existing taxable value is capped in a certain way. But we did find in the past, between the years 2001 and 2006, that we had years of 12% increase in revenue, in tax revenue. And the reason that that came about is, when you have new construction, it's all new. It goes on the books. So it goes on the books as new, and so you might have a 3% or 4% increase from your existing. But then you have sales, existing houses, and you have new houses. So we have found that if we do have more residential construction, it really helps us out.
Absolutely. And growing communities, I think, is very helpful. The one downside of that, which, if there is a downside, it also requires additional services they have to provide, so therefore, the cost could go up as well. So that's the part of the offset.
Although some of our existing facilities, like this building, for example, it used to be 6,000 square feet, we expanded to 35,000 square feet. So some facilities, and some of our uses, like, we wouldn't necessarily have to change our police department and so forth. These are big cost-side items that we're not changing. So for us, growth is good.
Growth is definitely good, and I would say, you know, for more mature communities that don't have the growth, don't have the land to have construction, they're definitely much more capped, and those municipalities have felt a lot more pain over the last few years versus right now. However, again, if you're growing, you have to hire a couple of extra police officers or, you know, additional firemen, et cetera, and I know you use the joint fire department. However, there are some costs that could creep up as well. Again, it's usually not one-for-one, but there are some costs that could go up.
Martin, Councilmember Gierba had a question as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a statement. We built this building to compile two buildings that were existing, so it wasn't just built as a larger building to accompany a larger population. It was to consolidate this building and an existing building that had our police department and other services. And so I've heard the statement twice, and I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
For revenue sharing, there have been some changes at the state level. Good news is, state share revenues are expected to go up. Another little piece of good news is that the EVIP requirements that were due three times a year in the past, in the last few years, it's consolidated into one requirement that's due December 1. So it is a little bit less of a burden on the city. And these next couple pages basically spell out the requirements of what needs to be submitted, the calculations, and what the expectation is for the state share revenues. I do want to caution the city to make sure, just keep an eye on what the payments are going to be. You can go to the state website, and they provide updated estimates for the next fiscal year of what your state share revenues should be. Page 10, personal property taxes. I know that the city's been talking about this for quite some time, and Proposal 1, which has passed, as you know, in August. And again, it just kind of spells out the effects and the changes. Again, I would caution the city. I know we've been told that 100% reimbursement, but it's kind of until the day, actually, until the money comes in, I always caution everybody to make sure that, keep an eye on that. Page 12, deficit elimination plans. I do want to point out that there are no deficits in the financial statements for any other funds. The reason we include this information in here in the next couple of pages, it just shows the definition of what a deficit is. It seems kind of plain that if you're in a negative position in your fund balance, that it's a deficit. However, when you look at Water and Sewer Fund, for example, Component units, other funds, a lot of times, it's not necessarily a deficit in that case. As long as your current assets are greater than your current liabilities in those funds, often it's not considered a deficit. So we just want to point out what the definition is. But again, there are no deficits that you have to worry about. Page 13 talks about new rules governing management of federal programs. And basically, that kind of goes back to the single audit, which you have had in the past, not this year. So if the city, for example, this year would have received $500,000 or more in federal awards, you would have been required to have a single audit for all those programs. And usually, you select, you know, we would select based on criteria, one or two of those programs to be tested. Starting with January 1 of 2015, so not until your 2016 fiscal year, that threshold goes up to $750,000. So which does make it a little bit harder to break that threshold, therefore, the odds of having a single audit are reduced a little bit. There are some other changes that are happening with the federal programs, just administratively. It does spell out some of the items here. In addition, we also provide webinars on Plant Moran's website, that if you're interested in taking a look, even though you're not subject to the single audit, there are some changes that I would recommend taking a look at. And we also suggested that we'd be happy to come out, meet with the management, in order to discuss any questions you may have after reviewing those webinars. New pension standard on the last page, Page 14, that's GASB 68, as mentioned earlier. So again, MERS will be able to help out with the calculation. And in that case, any liability that you have, the actuarial liability for your pension, technically will have to be recorded on your full accrual statements. It does not impact your general fund, your individual funds. Your Water and Sewer Fund does have to record it, because it is a full accrual fund. But again, it doesn't really impact the way you budget. It doesn't change anything of your day-to-day operations, but the liability will have to be reported. And then the last item, potential changes in audited financial statement due dates. Right now, there's conversations about having a due date instead of 180 days, which is six months, down to 150 days, five months. It doesn't really impact the city, but just wanted to make sure that you know. And the reason I say it doesn't impact the city is because you've always been able to complete the audit and file the financial statements within less than five months. So it shouldn't really be a burden on the city. So that's all we had on the letters and the documents. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. I do want to say thank you very much to the city. I know that it's a big burden on the city and the staff, management, to have auditors come in, bombard everybody with a bunch of questions, on top of everything else that is going on day-to-day operations. We do really appreciate it. The staff has been really helpful in getting the information, and that's why you see the reports being filed in October versus later on, November, December. So thank you very much. We appreciate working with you.
Thank you, Martin. Thank you, Nick. Are there any additional questions? Please.
Just a comment. I think over the years, the city has had a great benefit from the relationship it's had with Plant Moran. Plant Moran are leaders in the field, and they provide us information on an interim basis, sometimes in the middle of the year, or through their seminars, or just a phone call. So I think we benefit a lot from this relationship.
Thank you.
No doubt. Gentlemen, well, thank you very much. Martin, you said you were going to stick around in case anything comes up later?
Absolutely.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Okay, my friends, moving on in the agenda this evening, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, and this would be regarding the audit. The fund balance, I wasn't sure what was left, but I know as an individual and someone, good bookkeeping is having enough money to be able to take care of your expenses for six months. And I was wondering, with what our costs are a day, how many weeks could the city run with the fund balance that has been shown?
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Other additional public comments? No, then we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Burgoyne. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearing. This is item fourteen dash two oh eight. This is special land use request for two fifty East Michigan Ave Vet Clinic. This is a series of four motions. The first motion will be to acknowledge receipt of the September twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen memo from the Celine Planning Commission Recording Secretary Connie DeHaan.
So, moved.
Thank you, Mr. Girba. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Rhodes. Are there any questions regarding the memo? No? Okay. It's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by Rhodes to approve. All those in, or to acknowledge receipt, rather, excuse me. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. This time, the chair will entertain a motion to open the public hearing, affording anyone from the public an opportunity to speak on this issue.
So, moved.
Moved by Councilmember Girba to open the public hearing, was that seconded by Cybok Kanig?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor of opening the public hearing at, well, exactly eight thirty, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
I'm sorry, I didn't mention this before. This is a former Dr. Foster's property, and I walked it, and the sidewalks are very bad, and the approach, there are pieces of cement that are gone. And I notice that's not part of the proposed five issues of concern. Of course, the parking lot's a mess, but the sidewalks are the ones that I would hope, as we have a walkable city, that those would be fixed.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional public comments? Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
At eight thirty-one, Mr. Girba?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Cybok Kanig. All those in favor of closing the public hearing at eight thirty-one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. Bear with me as I read this motion. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the special land use at Section 4A zero four point one to allow use of a tenant space as a veterinarian clinic located at two fifty East Michigan Ave Celine, subject to the following conditions. One, that a parking lot light with shield be installed to illuminate the parking lot. Two, the drive approach to the parking lot be replaced with new concrete. Three, a fence will be installed along the south property line adjoining the residential structure. A fence permit application and detail should be submitted to the Building and Engineering Department for review and approval. Four, the fence to screen the parking lot will be installed along South Davenport sidewalk per D two requirements. A fence permit application and detail shall be submitted to the Building and Engineering Department for review and approval. And five, that the Planning Commission allows twelve spaces in lieu of fourteen required, required spaces for the proposed use of utilizing the Parking Flexibility Section thirteen point zero three four. Is there a motion?
To approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes. Is there a second to approve?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Girba. Mr. Rubel, do you care to make any comment about this, sir? And I know we have the, the property owner and, well, a business owner who'd like to come to our town, and if you'd like to make comment, we would welcome that as well. We'll start with you, Mr. Rubel.
Yeah. Regarding the sidewalk repairs, they aren't a condition because they were noted on the site plan itself for replacement. And Mr. Helmer intends to fix those. It was his plan all along to repair the parking lot, driveway, and the sidewalk. So, those items are covered by the site plan.
Mr. Helmer, do you care to make any comment, sir? Or your petitioner, we would welcome that?
Well, a parking lot will be replaced. Hopefully, they're going to tear out the old one this, end of this week, put the new parking lot next week. He asked that I not put the fences in until they get that done, or the approach in until they get the lot done, because they're going to be backing in with heavy trucks and removing and replacing. And we will replace the squares of sidewalk that need replacing.
Okay, very good.
That's it.
Would you like to make a comment? You're certainly not required. No? Okay. Any questions for staff or the applicant? We'll start with Mr. Burgoyne and then move to Mayor Protem Tahar.
Would there be anything wrong with putting some comment about replacing sidewalk portions as required in our motion? Because I, I think it's valid if there's something there. Would that be acceptable to the maker and secondator of the motion?
Obviously, the chair will entertain any motion. It's already a part of the site plan. But if the mover and seconder would, would like to add that, or if you'd like to offer an amendment, we vote on that separately, the chair will, will entertain whatever's offered.
I think since city staff and planning have already approved or noted sidewalk replacement, it seems unnecessary to add it.
Would you concur with that position, Mr. Girba?
I don't have a problem with putting that in as an amendment.
Okay. It's your call, Mr. Burgoyne.
Well, I'd like to move an amendment to state that sidewalk repair shall be done as required by, by staff.
Okay. So, Mr. Burgoyne would offer Condition Six, which would articulate that sidewalk repairs will be completed. What was the?
As required by staff.
As required by staff.
Recommendation, yeah.
Required by staff. Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second it, but should it be staff or per site plan recommendations?
Per site plan. I will accept, per site.
Per site plan?
Recommendations, yeah.
Okay. So, sidewalks will be completed per site plan. Okay, is the sixth condition. So, we'll vote on the amendment first. Is there additional discussion? I don't think the amendment's necessary, but I'm certainly not going to oppose it. If there's nothing further, it's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Girba, to add Condition Six, which states that sidewalks will be completed per site plan. All those in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Okay, so we're back to the full motion now as amended. Any other questions or comments for, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, I apologize.
Yes.
I forgot about you.
Thank you. I noticed in the original application, the proposed property use was actually described as a two-unit property use, one for veterinarian animal and the other for human chiropractic, which then disappeared, the human chiropractic aspect disappears in Mr. Rubel's September seventeenth memo and is also not included in the recommendation.
Right, that's, because that's an allowed use. That doesn't require special land use. That's an allowed use.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Additional comments? Well, I would just add, and I think I articulated this at, at planning, Mr. Helmer, we appreciate the money and time and attention you've put into that, that structure and that facility. It was in desperate need of repair, and we appreciate that. And we appreciate you investing in Celine and relocating your business here, and we, we hope you thrive and prosper in the years to come. Thank you very much. If there's nothing further, again, noting that we now have Condition Six as a component of this motion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of a motion to approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We move on now to new business, item fourteen dash two oh nine. This is Eagle Scout Project, Paul Crowley. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve Paul Crowley's Eagle Scout project of uploading photos of headstones at Oakwood Cemetery and uploading them onto a searchable website. Why don't we with, delay the, the motion, and we'll let the applicant present first, open it up for questions and dialogue, and then we can proceed to vote. So, Paul, thank you for being here tonight. This is an important initiative. I know the clerk's office will, will value it greatly. And I'll turn it over to you whenever you're ready. Chase, can we get the screen down?
Yeah.
Okay, for my Eagle project, I propose to upload photos of gravestones from Oakwood Cemetery to the Billian Graves website and transcribe them onto online records. Billian Graves is a program partnered with FamilySearch in which people can download an app onto smartphones that allow them to take pictures of gravestones and upload it to the Billian Graves website with its GPS location. From the website, people can access the pictures and transcribe them. After the records are transcribed, they can be found on the Billian Graves website or on the FamilySearch website. Billian Graves helps people find records of their ancestors. The only thing that I need from the city of Celine is permission to upload photos and permission to have volunteers on the, on the work site and a contact person to be able to work with. It won't cost any money. The app is free. The Billian Graves website is free, and all the materials that will be used for the project have already been I'm expecting to be on the site for three to four workdays for several hours at a time. Starting date, I would hope to start in early November, and it would be done before December ends. What, the benefits of the project, Billian Graves allows people to find records of their ancestors at no cost and no matter where they live. And it creates a perfect, a permanent record that cannot be destroyed by water or fire unlike other records. And there's no cost to the city of Celine. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the applicant, Mr. Girba, followed by Mr. Rhodes?
Just curious, which section of the cemetery are you going to start with? Just the old section or the whole cemetery?
Um, I don't know what I would start with, but I'd plan to do all of it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rhodes, and then Mr. Burgoyne.
Yeah, I like your proposal. The, the city has a software package for our cemetery already, which I believe allows for the inclusion of photos in it. And I wonder how what you're doing ties in with what we have, that I think we've been struggling to get completed.
Do you want to comment on that, Clerk Royal? Pull the microphone forward so everyone can hear you, and push the button.
We would like to get a copy of anything that you upload, although if you're doing it from an app for, like, a phone, I don't know if you'd be able to do that. But if you're taking pictures, we would like to get a copy of anything that you, you create.
Okay.
If Mr. Rhodes has nothing further, Mr. Burgoyne?
I was just wondering, what got you interested in this, and how did you find out about it? And a lot of people are interested in tracing back their roots, and it's a really good thing. So, I'm just wondering how you got into it.
Well, my mother is interested in genealogy, so she showed me the website and the idea of doing it for an Eagle project. And since I'm only fourteen right now, I just turned fourteen last week, I didn't want to do a project that involved, like, muscle work. So, I thought this would be easy to do.
My kind of work.
Smart man, I would have chosen something similar when I was your age. That's good. Mr. Burgoyne, did you have a follow-up at all?
No.
No, well, you know, Paul, this is, this is a great project, a great initiative, and I think will be beneficial not only to the, the city but also to the citizens. So, I applaud you coming forward and volunteering your service and your expertise. It's greatly appreciated. Mr. Rhodes?
One other question. Will your photos be indexed to the cemetery plots as they're identified within the city records?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good. Okay. Paul, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Appreciate your parents being here as well. Okay, again, we're on new business item fourteen dash two oh nine. This is Eagle Scout Project. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve or not to approve Paul Crowley's Eagle Scout project of uploading photos of headstones at Oakwood Cemetery and uploading them onto a searchable website.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Any discussion? No? Then all those in favor of approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you again. Appreciate you being here this evening. Well, that was great. And we move on to another exciting item, new business, item fourteen dash two eleven. This is Salt Springs Brewery LLC, application for microbrewery license. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen letter from Mark Zavinskis to approve or not to approve the application for Salt Springs Brewery LLC for the following license, a new microbrewer license, new small wine-making license, and new small distiller license, and to authorize or not to authorize the clerk to sign the application and submit with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
All right. We'll start with acknowledged receipt by Councilmember Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Mark, you and, you've got two of your business partners present with you this evening. Do you want to come forward and talk a little bit about what your plans are? It's all very exciting, and we'll open it up for questions. Maybe introduce your cohorts here.
My name is Mark Zavinskis. This is Ron Schofield and Ed Broces. Ed and I have been passionate home brewers, having a combined forty-plus years of home brewing. And we're excited to bring our passion to Celine and this exciting new venture in a pretty glorious location and building. Our intent is to open a microbrewery as well as a full restaurant, featuring farm-to-table menu with small plates, tapas, stone-fired pizzas, fresh salads, sandwiches, cheese and meat plates, and more. We plan to take advantage of the beautiful space outside to make a wonderful patio, sitting area, beer garden. Inside, we're going to try to maintain a lot of the charm of the church and, of course, leave the exterior intact as much as possible, respecting the historic importance of that structure in the build, in the community. And really just hope to serve as good shepherds of taking care of this building and giving it a new purpose and a new life, and hopefully bring some new vitality to that area as well as a lot of new jobs for the city and a pretty big project that we're really excited about.
Excellent. Gentlemen, do you want to add anything?
I think that was right.
Okay, all right. I'm going to let you do the talking for him, Mark. Okay, well done. What questions do we have for our applicants? Mr. Girba, do you have any questions, sir?
Yes, Mr. Campbell, can you explain the process again? I realize that this request has both the brewery license and the wine maker and the distillery license. Is it just the fact that it's better to do them all three at once, like we did with the Nano Brewery? Or, I didn't know, because I was thinking this was just going to be a brewery at one time.
And actually, the expert on this is Terry. She's the one that's been, because these are different, these are different rules from your standard liquor license that we're used to in the past. So, I know she's, she's been well versed with the state.
They were going to just do the brewer's license, and then I contacted Mark to see if he wanted to do the distillers, because it is a long process, and it's easier to go ahead and get it, even if you're not going to use it right now, that he hasn't able to have it, instead of having to go through this whole process again.
And they won't restrict us on additional, if somebody else wanted to open another business in the city, limit or restrict us? We're not limited to anything in terms of numbers?
Not at this point. They have, they do not have any restrictions on them.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? No? Okay. Gentlemen, thank you again for being here this evening.
Thanks, Governor.
So, we divided this into two motions, the first of which was moved by Girba, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt of the September twenty-ninth letter. All those in favor of acknowledging receipts signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Now, at this time, I'm seeking a motion to approve or not to approve the application from Salt Springs Brewery LLC for the following licenses, a new microbrewery license, a new small wine-maker license, and a new small distiller's license, and to authorize or not authorize the clerk to sign the application and to submit with. not authorize the clerk to sign the application and to submit with Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Move to approve and authorize?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Cybo Kanek to approve and to authorize, seconded by Councilmember Burgoyne. Any discussion? Mayor Protam Tahar?
Yes, thank you. Um, I have a question. There's some dis, discussion of, um, making changes outdoors, adding, um, a beer garden, which sounds very attractive, um, and I wonder, um, if there's, if there's planning commission
Wednesday?
Issues that need to be dealt with then, and how that fits into the process that we're doing now? Like, how does the whole process, what's the, what's the timeline and, and where are we in it with this, um, particular action?
Fine, Mr. Mayor. Gary, jump in if, if I missed something here, but, um, essentially, this is, um, the beer garden is the special land use item that, that needs approval, uh, and that is, as I mentioned just a moment ago, that will be Wednesday night's, um, planning commission agenda to be reviewed and, and considered.
Okay, and then it, if I may?
Please.
It will then, would come back to us for approval after the planning commission, assuming the planning commission recommends it? Or are we done?
No, you are correct, because it is a special land use. If it were permitted juice, just like you mentioned earlier, like the chiropractic.
I think our goal is to bring it back at the subsequent meeting, then on the 10th of November.
Okay, all right, yep. Thank you for that.
To keep things moving along.
Process clarification.
Good questions.
Mr. Burgoyne?
In terms of, um, uh, sheltering from inclement weather, how do you plan to do that for the beer garden?
As far as any coverings or such?
Yeah.
None intended at this time, uh, just the trees, uh, maybe some applied umbrellas on tables, uh, but quite frankly, yeah, no covered structures, uh, maybe some twinkly lights, and that's about all you'll see over your head, uh, that and the trees and natural surroundings, yeah.
Has to be in good weather, okay.
You've got it, you've got it. If anything, in the future, you know, budget's allowing in the future, and that would be a future approval, it would be, there may be a deck toward the back that might have some covered shelter if we build an outdoor area with perhaps, um, some additional support for serving, uh, outside or, you know, some additional cooking area for smoking, smoking, or, that, that'd be down the road. If there was any cover, it wouldn't be now.
Anything further? Mr. Tahar?
Yes, um, so this is, this is based on hearsay from a long time ago. There were discussions about, uh, other uses of that building when the Calico Cat moved out, um, and I recall hearing, but I don't know if it's true, that there were concerns about parking pressure, um, from certain ideas that, that might have been carried out in that building. Is that, is that an issue? Or is that because we've changed zoning downtown, or, or was that just wild rumor that had no basis in fact?
Sure, well, right, my understanding from staff review, um, again, the only item, um, that is, again, going before planning commission is the beer garden portion, and with the addition, with the, the current, um, the privately, uh, owned portion of parking, uh, and, and the rest of it being a similar use that was there, I believe all the, the parking, um, is, is already, um, achieved.
Okay, thank you.
You're nodding. You don't have anything to add to that, do you? Okay, good. Anything further? Well, let me just say, i, if I may, it, it has been a distinct privilege and honor to get to know these three gentlemen. Um, I'm not expecting great things. I know that great things will happen when this business comes to, to fruition, um, and I think, and I hope I'm not out of line, out of line saying this, but if any members of this body or any members of the public would like to learn a little bit more, I'm sure you'd be happy to entertain their questions, uh, and comments, um, and I think that people will find your, your business plan and what you're planning to offer very exciting. Um, I think I said in a prepared, uh, press release that I think it, it will be a game-changing moment for our downtown and our community, and this will be a real destination business. So you, gentlemen, continue to rely on us, city staff, my office, if we can ever do anything to help, you know, be sure to let us know, because we're very much invested and want to see you be successful in perpetuity. Okay? If there's nothing further, it has been properly moved by Cybo Kanek and seconded by Burgoyne to approve and to authorize. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say aven, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you for being here, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, we move on to our last action item of the evening, which is new business item 14-212. This is audit report from Plant Moran for fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2014. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the audit report from Plant Moran for a fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2014.
So moved?
Thank you, Mr. Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. Any comments? Mr. Girba?
Just real quick, and I brought this, I brought this up pretty much every year, and again, this year I'm going to bring it up. Um, when we look at our current shortfall for the construction code fees in that area, we are, this year, fifty, forty-nine thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars in a shortfall. Last year, we were twenty-seven thousand dollars in a shortfall. We have to deal with this. I don't know what we need to do with it, but we need to address it, and it's continuing over so far over since this was started in 2001. We have subsidized this by 1.3 million dollars, a significant money that could have been put towards other uses, and yet we subsidize other organizations and building departments and such. So at this point, um, if we're looking to try and reduce costs, there's where we got to do it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Rhodes?
I just wanted to thank Treasurer Bennett and her staff and, uh, city manager and all those who had anything to do with the fact that we've got a clean audit. I appreciate that.
Appreciate the comments, Mr. Rhodes, and just to, to double back to, to Mr. Girba's comments, unless I hear from objections from the dais, I'm happy to work with staff, Mr. Girba. I think discussing that issue and beginning to rectify it would be, um, that dialogue would be most, uh, appropriate and conducive to a work session, um, so I would work to schedule one. Uh, as you know, we've got a couple coming up, but we'll probably do it before the end of the year. Unless there are objections? No? Okay, we'll, you want to make over there, we can talk. Okay, very good. Uh, Martin, again, thank you for being here. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
It has been properly moved by Girba, seconded by Roth, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say aven, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to discussion items, Commission Committee or Task Force reports from council members. That was easy. Okay, you got one? You don't have to go, but if you got one?
I'm, I'm pleased to go, want to. Uh, Environmental Commission, uh, update. We have, uh, wanted to, to let everybody know that the commission has worked with, uh, Chase and Channel 18. We now have, I believe, six public service announcements that are running on, uh, on Channel 18 on a regular basis. We're doing a monthly blog on the Saline Post, and, uh, at our last meeting, we brought up the concept of talking with the schools to find out how we can interact with primarily the first and second graders about recycling, because we all sort of know that if you get kids excited about something, they'll bring the parents along, whether the parents really want to or not. Just sort of works that way. And then I have a little bit of information from the County Hazardous Waste Collection that took place on September 30th at DPW. I don't have the weights, the quantities yet for the various categories. I expect we'll have those by our next meeting, but there were 305 surveys that were completed by folks who came to, um, the event, and, um, they came from all over within the county. Uh, Saline, of course, had the largest number at 108, and then Ann Arbor or Lodi Township, Ann Arbor, uh, Pittsfield Township, New York Township right behind with others sort of following in. And, um, one of the questions that was asked was how did people hear about the event? And, uh, the newspapers, the online newspapers, um, and word of mouth were the two largest, and then township newsletters, and then a combination of social media, the website, Facebook, uh, et cetera. So, um, as those of us who have studied this problem of how to communicate with people and, and have not been able to come up with any one single way, this just reinforces that, you, you need to just put that information out every way you can think of.
Very good. Any other commissioner committee task force reports? No reports or other announcements? Um, real quick, because I don't want to forget, Mr. Girba sent out, um, an email asking for an update on the Universal Dicas site, uh, or former site on Monroe Street, and I believe the city manager can do a, a brief update, and then, of course, when there's more pertinent information to share, I'm assuming that will come back, and then we'll get to you, Mayor Protam. I didn't mean to cut you off there. Mr. Campbell?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, it's the same, uh, um, the same status that we've had for quite a while now, in that John's Control is waiting for, um, EPA to approve, uh, the amended, um, work plan, um, so, uh, we are continuing, um, working through, we're going to make contact again, um, this week, um, and then, uh, potentially, um, I don't know where, how far we'll get between now and the election, but, um, we will also, if we're not getting, we'll, we'll be, um, talking with our legislators, with, with, um, our congressmen to try and help, see if we can push forward. We, we did that a little bit with a little bit of success before the, a few years ago, um, but again, nothing conclusive at this point, but we're, we are pushing to, to move forward.
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, somebody had asked me about it, and I'm just disappointed again because of our congressman not moving forward on it, but I expected him not to do anything, because that's pretty much how he's operated. I would like to hope that if we have to look at another individual, potentially looking at our senator or someone else that might be able to help us.
If, if I may, uh, I think that's, uh, a very valid, yet regrettable point, um, and I think that there is some merit, and, um, you know, there's, there's multiple, uh, individuals here at City Hall and of course the Fire Department who've worked successfully with Senator Stabenow's office in the past, interacting, engaging with federal entities. So, um, I think there might be some value in, in going beyond our congressman at this point, or at a minimum, reaching out to another federal official who has the ability to get things done, has a track record of accomplishing tangible things for the, the people they represent. Please.
Just for the record, we have not, my office has not contacted him at this point. We, we contacted the former congressman, uh, Mr. Schauer.
I thought we had contacted him.
No, we have not. We have not made contact with him, but we will, um, um, so we'll reach out, um, this week to them.
Okay.
But I just want to make that.
Okay, because I know that was a recommendation a year ago, and I didn't know that had not happened. Thank you.
Other reports or announcements? Okay, three, we'll go Tahar, Cybo Kanek, Burgoyne.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so I, I will, uh, note that with great pleasure, that this past Thursday, 20 10th grade students and two teachers from the, the high school in our sister city, Lindenberg, Germany, arrived, uh, for a 17-day visit. This is the first such exchange that, uh, the new German teacher at our high school has organized. It is, however, the seventh, um, exchange that's taken place since the beginning, um, of the relationship, um, and one of the teachers, Katrin Kope, uh, is here for the fifth time with a group of students. Um, there, everyone at the high school, um, at least everyone that Sarah Schuster, the high school teacher, German teacher knows, is very excited about having these students here. They have a full program, um, of activities. They'll be, um, visiting in the schools, making presentations in the schools. They'll also, um, be touring in Saline, Rentschler Farm, uh, the Weber Blas School. Liebherr, of course, will be hosting them. They've also planned an independent trip to Chicago for next weekend. Um, and I, I would just want to take a minute also to explain about the, um, the umbrella organization under which this takes place. This is an important part of our sister-city relationship, but it's not strictly speaking a sister-city activity. It takes, um, place under the umbrella of the German-American Partnership Program, GAP, um, which is a nonprofit high school exchange program between schools in Germany and the United States, and it's sponsored both by the German Foreign Office and the U.S. Department of State. Um, and the program aims to integrate students into the everyday life of host families and classroom activities of host schools to provide them with a coherent inter, intercultural experience. And I can say, as a person who's traveled a lot and also, um, had the, the pleasure of spending time in people's homes in other countries, that being there and living the life of your host or living along with the life of your host is, is an unmatched experience in terms of intercultural understanding. So, um, the, the other, I have scribbled notes, um, the other thing to note about this is that, uh, this is a, a two-way exchange, so next year, at the end of the school year, um, in 2015, there is a group of students from Saline who will be traveling to Lindenberg and having the experience of being guests on the other side.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Cybo Kanek?
I have a couple of notes from the Saline Chamber of Commerce. Um, the first is coming up on Tuesday, the 28th, uh, we have a monthly building business relationships breakfast, and the topic of our breakfast on Tuesday is going to be crowdfunding, and we have a guest speaker coming in. Uh, you can make reservations for that breakfast through the salinechamber.org website. Um, also, uh, if you want to be in the Christmas parade, your time is running out. Applications are due, um, by November 10th to participate in the parade. Um, we also have several grand openings coming up, and it's interesting, these are not brand-new businesses, but these are businesses that have reinvested in themselves and are sort of rebranding and, and getting new looks. And the first one is, um, on Thursday, the 23rd, Domino's Pizza. That's at 5:30 is the ribbon cutting for that. Subway will have a grand reopening on Tuesday, the 28th. I believe that one is 4:30. And then on November 6th, Travis Point is, um, rededicating their tennis facility after major renovations. So everybody's welcome. There are often giveaways and great deals at our grand opening, so come on out and support these businesses.
Very good. Thank you kindly. Mr. Burgoyne?
I just wanted to, uh, say a couple of words about Saline Area Social Service. They're having a community leaders forum, November 11th, and, um, to keep progressing towards finding a long-term solution, so, um, glad to see that's moving forward. Uh, the other thing that happened recently, about 10 days ago, we had Peanut Day through Quanis, and Quanis usually, uh, pushes forward about a thousand dollars to social service. It's not going to be the solution, but it's a little bit of help, and, uh, people generously give. That's what's nice about Saline.
I appreciate you bringing up the Social Services Community Leadership Summit. In fact, I brought the letter, and hopefully everybody got one of these in their City Hall mailbox, and I think they're encouraging everyone to RSVP, um, and they list the, um, the email address for the, um, the, the group and then, as, as well as a phone number. So I, I would echo Councilmember Burgoyne's comments. If you're able to participate, I think that would be, that'd be terrific. Mr. Rhodes?
I have one other announcement, and it also occurs on November 11th, so unfortunately, I will not be able to attend that Social Services, uh, get-together, but there will be a crowdfunding event, informational event that will take place at Mount Giamos at 7:00 in the evening on the second floor. There will be a representative from the Michigan Municipal League, and I believe also an individual from one of the businesses that has successfully gone through this newly-created crowdfunding mechanism within the state of Michigan. It's open to anyone who would like to attend. It is, um, would be helpful for not only entrepreneurs but also existing businesses who wish to expand or improve their operation, needing funding to do that, and it also would be helpful for those individuals who would like to make investments in their local businesses. This is a way for ordinary individuals to, um, invest in a, in a local business. Can be anything from $25 up to $10,000 is the maximum amount that one could put in. Um, the, the, when the state of Michigan passed this, um, what's called MILE, uh, Michigan Investment Local Exemption Act, um, the thought was that if local people made some kind of investment in a local business, that they would help to support that business and therefore improve the odds that that business could survive and, uh, would be helpful to the community. So for those of you who are able to do that, November 11th, 7:00 in the evening, second floor, Mount Giamos, and that event is being cosponsored by the Business and Economic Success Team of Saline Main Street, by the Chamber of Commerce, and by the city. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. On the issue of entrepreneurship and small business growth, I wanted to remind everyone that we have our second annual Small Business Summit this Friday here in council chambers at noon. I spoke to Business Ambassador Korfman earlier this afternoon, and we still have, um, ample space, so if you bump into any budding entrepreneurs or local business owners, please encourage them to attend. It will be a luncheon with presentations from the Michigan Small Business Technology Development Development Center, SCORE, and, um, the Small Business Association of Michigan. Um, I think the presentations will be very, very compelling, um, and helpful. So again, um, we do require RSVPs and they can email or call Ms. Korfman. And again, that's noon, uh, this, this Friday. If there's no other announcements, um, do you want to briefly plug the parliamentary procedure class on the 20th?
I just wanted to let anybody know who wanted to attend. I've only got 15 people who have, um, responded, so if you do want to attend this, so please let me know. Okay.
Did you, um, share that with the school board?
Not yet.
Okay.